Large crowd that we have in here tonight. At this time, I'll call on Sheldon Stevenson to lead us with our invocation.
This has been running through my mind for quite a long time, but it bothers me when people work for their good to block the good for all the people. And the principle that I hold before us, which we all know, is that God has given us lives to live in a very diverse world with many, many different peoples. And what I think is important in our gaining of life is to appreciate the good in people that's different from us. And we may appropriate the good for the whole as we are able to do that. And I think that comes down even to personal experiences. My wife and I had a huge hay barn, and we had to roof that barn. We got long ladders and went way up the top. We were roofing the barn, and I learned something. She knew more about roofing barns than I did. And for a man, that's hard to allow it to happen. We have an oldest boy was young, four years old. He did something wrong at the table, and I took him away from the table and I paddled his bottom. He didn't cry a drop. He just looked up at me and said, "You know, this doesn't do any good." Well, he knew more about it than I did. And maybe I'll give you one more illustration. In the College of Forestry where I went, there were no women. There were only men. And you had to take every course, and one of the speech course. Everybody had to give a speech, and I did. And they voted had the best speech, and I won. And the reason I won is because I chose the right topic. In that all men's school, I chose my topic. This is a woman's world. Well, I didn't believe it, and they didn't believe it either. But you see how wrong we were. Anyway, it's a matter, I think, of realizing the good in people different from us and to use the good. That God has given us these lives to live for the good. So may we pray. Dear Lord God, we have been given lives to live in this very diverse world with many people different from us. Help us, Lord. Enable us to live sensibly as people, as individuals, as best we can in the world, standing up strongly for what is right, what is good, what is the best for the community. Help us to grow in the spirit of understanding, with a very strong commitment and thought and work and being, to be the people, the kind of people you and your love for each of us has created us to be. Amen.
Thank you, Steve. Millie Wallace, thank you for bringing Steve tonight. We appreciate it very much.
Say it again?
I was thanking Ms. Wallace for bringing you, longtime Morganton resident. Introduction of our city council. On my far right is Dr. Alfred Hamer, city councilman. City Councilman, what's your name, Forrest Fleming? Our city attorney is Louis Vina. I'm Mel Cohen, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simmons, city councilman. John Cantrell, city councilman. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary. And Becky Brinkley is interpreting for our deaf community tonight. Again, I want to welcome everyone, and I hope you've had a nice New Year's and a safe New Year's. And we're looking forward to a very productive 2013 here in the city of Morganton. Resolution honoring from retirees, and this is getting to be heavy and very frequent, by the way, for our community and because of our city is aging out. A lot of our wonderful, wonderful employees leaves openings for nice young people to come forward, but we hate to lose the veterans in our city. And it's really, in most cases, it's sad. Frank, I'm going to ask you to come forward. I'm going to read a resolution for you, and then I'll come over and meet you at the podium. First resolution honoring Frank W. Braswell, Sr. Whereas Frank W. Braswell, Sr. was employed by the city of Morganton as fire engineer in the public safety department on May 11, 1998. And whereas Frank W. Braswell, Sr. has faithfully served the city of Morganton, and the public safety department has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 15 years, 10 months. And whereas Frank W. Braswell, Sr. retired from the city of Morganton as fire engineer in the public safety department on January 1, 2013. And whereas the Morganton city council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Frank W. Braswell, Sr., and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Frank W. Braswell, Sr. Adopted this the 7th day of January, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. In form of motion, guys.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Frank, I've always, when I talk about you in front of the council, I tell the people about how you saved my mother's life twice, not once, but twice. And your expertise and your staff on your job saved her life first times, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate it. And the citizens of Morganton, you were involved in another situation which saved a young person's life, and you have meant so much to our community. And I hope one day to see you back out there roving the street. This is money you and I will share after the meeting. Resolution, and you're welcome to say anything you'd like.
Well, basically, Mayor and Councilman and Chief, I'd like to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the city of Morganton and its people. And I guess the main thing that I'm going to really miss is the people that I've worked with and the friends that I've made here.
Thank you, Frank. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also add that while we're recognizing Frank's service to the city tonight, we should also recognize Frank's almost lifelong, I would say, for many years of his adult life service to the rescue squad and being involved in emergency service as a whole. So he's certainly been an asset to our community from several different avenues, and certainly has represented the city and the Department of Public Safety quite well. In keeping with a time-honored tradition of retirement from the fire service and specifically the public safety department, it gives me great pleasure to present to Frank his fire service, fire helmet for his service to the department. And also to present to him a plaque that is indicative of the department's patches over the history of this agency. You could see where the department, the patches are separated by police and fire, however, into the unification of the public safety department presented to Frank Braswell for his longstanding service.
Very good. Frank, I don't want to see you plowing the fields with a helmet on. Resolution honoring Donald W. Danford. Whereas Donald W. Danford was employed by the city of Morganton as water resources manager in the public utilities department on October 15, 1990. Promoted to water resources director in water resources department on July 19, 1993. And whereas Donald W. Danford has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the water resources department, and has given of his time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for 24 years, 8 months. And whereas Donald W. Danford retired from the city of Morganton as director of the water resources department on January 1, 2013. And whereas the Morganton city council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Donald W. Danford and express their appreciation for a job well done. But now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Donald W. Danford. Adopted this the 7th day of January, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. Motion, guys.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don, didn't shave before you came tonight. Because we're going to split those two checks after a fight, and I'm going to chomp in on yours. So thank you for all your years and dedication, because I know some of the nights in the winter and all were quite rough for you and your guys, but thank you for a job well done. And I know you were in High Point before you came to Morganton, but again, thank you for being here. God bless you. And you can say a few words.
I do appreciate the opportunity. When I was in High Point, I was given an opportunity to come up here, and I do not regret it. This has been a very good opportunity for me. I've enjoyed it. Enjoy is a word that I use while I've been here. I can't work somewhere if I don't have fun, and we've always found a way to have some fun. Even though we were crying, we also found a way to have some fun, and I appreciate that. The council has been a dedicated group of people. Councilman Choates not here. Councilman Evans are not here. Mike Cronk was here when I first came here, and they're all people that have contributed and made this a good place to work for me. And I want to thank each and every one of y'all for your time, your efforts, and your consideration for the employees and for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Sandy Gullett. Resolution honoring Sandra K. Gullett. Whereas Sandra K. Gullett was employed by the city of Morganton, this is a long one now, ladies and gentlemen, you've got to listen to all these different, employed by the city of Morganton as collections clerk in the utilities business office on May 31, 1983. Promoted to customer service representative, billing clerk in the utilities business office on April 7, 1986. Promoted to supervisor of the utilities in the accounting services collections department on August 10, 1986. Reclassified as collection supervisor in the finance department on June 29, 1987. Reclassified as business office supervisor in the finance department on July 2, 2001. And reclassified as customer service manager in the finance department on July 1, 2004.
Different titles, same job.
Yeah. Whereas Sandra K. Gullett has faithfully served the city of Morganton in the business office, finance department, and has given her time and efforts for the benefit of the citizens of Morganton for this is it, 30 years and 2 months. And whereas Sandra K. Gullett retired from the city of Morganton as customer service manager in the finance department on January 1, 2013. And whereas the Morganton city council wishes to officially recognize the contributions of Sandra K. Gullett and express their appreciation for a job well done. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Morganton that the mayor present this resolution to Sandra K. Gullett. Adopted this the 7th day of January, 2013. Mel Cohen, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. In the motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sandy, you're coming back. True?
Part-time.
Part-time, okay.
For a few months, anyway.
Little bit.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate everything, sir.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the council one more time and to Sally for giving me the opportunity to serve the city. The city really is a good place to work. The employees, the people I've worked with, the finance department, Sally was finance director at one time, and then Karen came in, and Karen's been finance director, both wonderful people to work for and work with, along with the people, other people in the finance department. Just thank you, and may God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, under public advocacy issues and strategies, I'm going to make some comments at this time before I'll turn it over to Sally. The last month has been very tough for me as a city councilman and someone that has worked with young people and through the DAR and reading and so on and so forth with children and having grandchildren of my own. The Sandy Hook Newtown, Connecticut disaster, where 20 kids and six adults were killed in cold blood. As the president said, it was his worst day in his four-year presidency. It's my worst day in, I won't tell you how many years. I mean, I know there've been a lot of wars, conflicts, president assassinated, Martin Luther King assassinated, attempts on two presidents' lives. So many people maimed in conflict overseas, but 20 young people that will not see their parents' dreams fulfilled. It was very, very tough for me, and I'm sure it was tough for everybody out there. And I just had, I had to say it tonight, and I hope we never, as far as the country's concerned, have another event like this. And I hope that our government does something to prevent things like this from happening because they happened in Colorado, it happened in Arizona, it happened at Virginia Tech, it happened in Sandy Hook Elementary School. It should never have gotten that far. So I just hope that something's done. I would like to also wish Sally Sandy and her family well while her mother is ill, Dr. Hamer while his wife Diane is ill. Let's say prayers for them tonight. Lady that is active in our community of parents, Judy Davis, her mother passed away Saturday night. And of course, we had a young student at N C S D graduated a few years ago that was in Charlotte and was killed in cold blood by three young people. Just massive bad news, and let's try to change our country that we so love. Sally, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. We'd like to let everyone know that the city council is going to hold a workshop on Friday, February the 1st. That's going to be at the Community House from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and that will be the annual winter planning workshop. And there'll be a detailed agenda that will come out closer to that meeting. And then we also have some good news. We have had some retirees tonight and some in the past several months, and as the mayor mentioned earlier, that gives us an opportunity for other folks to take over the helm and have opportunities with the city. We have two of those folks here tonight that we'd like to introduce. I've been teasing them, telling them we've got to put their faces out there so the people will know who to yell at when they're upset. But really, we want everybody to recognize them and welcome them to the management team of Morganton. The first one is Brooks Kirby, and Brooks is the new electric services director. Not a new face, been around for a while, but in a new position, and we're very pleased to have Brooks as part of the management team. You're welcome to say something if you like, but you don't have to.
I've got 15 minutes, right?
Yeah, 15 minutes.
I just want to thank the city, Sally, and the city council for this opportunity. I also want to thank Dan Brown for being patient and instructing me over the years since I've been here. I want to thank my wife Melanie, my daughter Elizabeth, for putting up with me for 20-some years. And I want to thank most of all my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. My goal is to do what's best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooks. Welcome aboard.
And we have with us tonight our new water resources director, and that is a new face for us, and we are very pleased and proud to have Brad Boris with us. And Brad joins us after a variety of experiences with some other municipalities in the water industry, and we are very glad to have you with us. And you're welcome to say anything if you'd like, but we won't require you to.
I won't take very long. I just want to thank Mr. Mayor, the council members, Ms. Sandy, for giving me this opportunity. I'm very blessed, I'm humbled, and I'm honored, and I'm looking forward to serve the citizens as well as everybody that works for the city as well. We're all on the same team together, and I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Power Agency, Sally?
Aye. Gearing up for a long session of the General Assembly and budget season.
Consent agenda, Sally.
The consent agenda before you tonight includes six individual items. The staff considers those items to be non-controversial, would ask that they be considered in one motion unless someone has an item they'd like removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, I will tell you that those items include minutes from the December 3 regular council meeting, tax releases in the amount of $463.88, the annual certification for firefighters' training, the appointment of Brad Boris to the Catawba Watery Water Management Group to represent the city, appointments of Dan Brown and Brooks Kirby to the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One Board, and also the rate committee for that group. And then finally, the appointment of tax collector and a resolution adopting an order that tells the tax collector to collect taxes. We are very fortunate, we have Denise Smith with us tonight, and she has moved into that position and has been doing just that, and we are grateful. So that's the last item on your consent agenda.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as is.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Under appearances, we've got two different people going to appear. One's listed, Mary Smith, Region 2, the Healthy Community Transformation Coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate this opportunity to share information about a grant project that is incurring in counties across North Carolina. It's the Community Transformation Grant Project, and it's funded by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention through the Division of Public Health. We're working across North Carolina to support four main strategies. Tobacco-free communities, active living, eating healthy by increasing access to fresh food, fresh, healthy food, and increasing community-based programs that support self-management of chronic disease. And my name again is Mary Smith, and I helped to coordinate this grant for what we call Region 2 that includes Burke, Caldwell, McDowell, Rutherford, Polk, Yancey, Mitchell, Avery, Henderson, Madison, Buncombe Counties. And the Burke Health Department is very much involved, and I have with me tonight Rebecca McLeod. She's the health director, so she's going to be working with us on this project. And I've given you a handout, and I hope that you'll take some time to just take a look at it because it will go over those four main strategies. It points out evidence-based strategies that communities can incorporate to make communities a healthier place to live. And there's also some help data in there I hope that you'll take a look at because it justifies really why we're moving in these directions. Now, because my time's limited, I'm just going to focus on one key issue here that I'd like to emphasize so that it will help to create healthy communities. And that's the impact that complete streets can have on a community. The North Carolina Department of Transportation adopted complete streets policy in July 2009, and the policy directs the department to consider and incorporate several modes of transportation when building new projects and when making improvements to existing infrastructure. And the benefits of this new approach include encouraging the use of alternative forms of transportation such as walking, bicycling, and public transportation. So through sidewalks, bike lanes, we can increase the connectivity between neighborhoods, streets, and transit systems, and improve the safety for pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. So incomplete streets, those designed with only cars in mind, limit transportation choices by making walking and bicycling and taking public transportation, making it inconvenient, unattractive, and often dangerous. Now, we know that good infrastructure encourages active living and poor planning discourages it. It's like mothers with babies and strollers can tell you how hard it is to get around when there are no sidewalks. We need good, safe places for kids to ride their bikes, hopefully to school. Planning that's considerate of all forms of transportation, not just cars, is proven to increase physical activity and quality of life. And we know that new businesses are using quality-of-life indexes to decide what counties that they want to locate in, and we know that you all want those jobs here in Burke County. And additionally, the health benefits of designing and implementing complete street practices are tremendous. A comprehensive walkability study has found that people in walkable communities did 35 to 45 more minutes of moderate intensity activity per week and were substantially less likely to be overweight or obese. And recent data does show that the people, adults here in Burke County, 28% report being inactive. And inactivity is a major factor in many chronic diseases, including diabetes, heart disease, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, and stroke. So if a doctor's telling his patients to get out there and be physically active, and if they do have a sidewalk that's just 10 minutes from where they live, they're 21% more likely to get that recommended amount of daily activity. And that might not seem like a lot, but that's 21 people out of 100 that will live a healthier, longer life because you have considered health outcomes and the important decisions that you make in planning for this community. You know, research shows that 75% of all medical spending is on preventable health problems. So physical activity, unhealthy eating, and tobacco use have an annual health care cost of over $6 billion in North Carolina. Therefore, I hope that you as elective officials will continue to work with professionals in the health arena like Ms. McLeod and our planners to design healthy, active communities that will provide cost savings to state and local governments and help contribute to your economic viability. So together, we can make a healthy choice, the easy choice in Burke County. My contact information as well as Ms. McLeod's is on your handout, and we would love to talk with you further about ways that we can make strategic decisions in disease prevention and community design that will result in healthier communities. And I thank you so much for your time and attention today.
Mary, let's see, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Smith?
We'll tell you that our planner is in the room, and we have a lot of sidewalks, but we have actually some sidewalks that lead nowhere. Want you to know that. So that's unusual for a town to have some that lead nowhere.
Complete those streets and those sidewalks.
But thank you very much for coming. And Ms. McLeod, thank you for coming with her, okay? Okay, we have now Ms. Krotz. And state your full name and where you reside, if you would.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and Madam Manager. My name is Susan Krotz. I have a residence at 7113 Roderick and Drive in Jonas Ridge. Thank you for letting me come and speak tonight. I appreciate your time and this opportunity to share my concerns regarding the U.S. Forest Service proposal to burn the Limbale Gorge Wilderness Area. And I will be speaking about several things tonight. I'll try and make this quick. First, I'm just going to give you an outline of what I'd like to talk about. We have a wilderness act where our gorge has been designated as wilderness, and that attracts many people to this area. I come through twice a week. I actually work in Greensboro, but I will be retiring here. Also, we have an omnibus act that funds this grandfather proposal, and that proposal prioritizes landscape treatment. The Wilderness Act does not allow for burning landscape treatment. for burning landscape treatment purposes. It only allows for certain wildfire purposes. The grant suggests that there are benefits for the local economy, but the local economies that are along the Linville Gorge Wilderness Area in Burke, Avery, and
McDowell?
Yes, thank you. McDowell County, as well as communities like Morganton and Linville Falls, are not really getting any economic benefits from this grant. The grant raves about economic benefits. Those benefits are going elsewhere in the state. This area was not really considered and engaged in the grant development process, and the citizens who reside and work in these areas may be negatively impacted by this grant. The grant calls for regular burning of the Linville Gorge, the entire 11,786 acres, over a 10-year period, every three to five years. The gorge is a very steep and rugged place, as you know. There's a picture of it in the spring, all lovely and green in its natural state, and it is, in addition to, you know, having, being internationally recognized, it's a tourism attraction, and it's a jewel of the state. Before I go into these other things, though, I did want to say that there is no real risk assessment planned by the Forest Service in this proposal on what areas of the gorge might be most risky to burn, what might go out of control by wildfire. They have done a very extensive assessment of what plants they would like to restore and where those are, and that is the basis for their prioritizing the Linville Gorge as an area to burn. Some of the negative impacts, I'm not going to take you through this whole proposal, because I think it is, or this whole presentation, I think is too long, but I'll just say, these are the, here's the federal omnibus act and the proposal. The federal omnibus act outlines the purpose and the eligibility criteria of this grant proposal. The proposal purpose suggests that the grant will encourage ecological, economic, and social sustainability. It's also supposed to demonstrate the degree to which it uses forest restoration byproducts that can offset treatment costs while benefiting local rural economies and improving forest health. These activities are not centered in this area. I have a copy of the grant, and I provided one to Ms. Russell, if anyone would like to read further on this. These are some of the potential threats to public health and safety: air quality from smoke comprise water quality, limitations to recreational users will be limited during burning periods, potential decline in local economic sustainability, reduction in tourism may impact businesses in Burke, McDowell, and Avery Counties, City of Morganton, and Linville Falls. Municipalities such as Morganton could incur substantial expenses to water systems if erosion and silt occur at significant levels. And wood products in the Linville Gorge will not be used for economic benefit. They cannot be removed. Said, the area of the entire proposal is 50,000 acres. The gorge is about one-quarter of that. It's really not a fit for this proposal in that it is a wilderness area, and I think that it's been put in this, you know, maybe with the best of intentions, but it is, in fact, not a good fit for it. Another aspect of the grant requires that key stakeholders be included, and it is my perception that key stakeholders that include local elected officials from our communities in this area were not consulted in the development of this grant proposal. You know, if they were, the proposal might look different than it looks today. This is what a prescribed burn area adjacent to the Wilderness Area boundary on Kissimmee Memorial Highway looks like 17 months after burning, and this is not the type of area that will attract tourism and recreational users to this crown jewel of our area. Items that the Morganton City Council might wish to consider, I would like to propose. First, there is an opportunity to submit comments to the U.S. Forest Service Scoping File 1950 before January 15, 2013, so that you have the right to appeal the decision if you don't agree with the decision of the Forest Service. You could also request an extension to the scoping period so that residents who might just still be learning about this have an opportunity to study it and then share their opinions and concerns with the Forest Service. You could also consider, at a future meeting, adopting a resolution requesting the U.S. Forest Service Regional Forester to put a moratorium on prescribed burning of the Linville Gorge Wilderness Area. And I have submitted to Ms. Russell a draft resolution for your consideration at a future date. Information for the public, again, the public may submit written comments, and if possible, propose alternatives. Alternatives might be less burning or no burning. The current deadline, January 15. This is the contact information, h-l-u-c-z-a-k@fs.fed.us. It's Ms. Heather Lookzak, U.S. Forest Service, 160 Zillicoa Street, Suite A, Asheville, NC, There are other resources for the public. There is a grassroots organization, Save Linville Gorge Wilderness, that has circulated an online petition. Currently, over 400 people have signed that petition. Many have submitted constructive comments that are emailing directly to the Forest Service, and these comments can be read on the website, and other resources regarding this issue may be found there as well. And I thank you very much. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions or provide other information.
Susan, thank you for coming, but anybody want to have a question, Susan, a little bit? It's very important in our area, without a doubt. We'll have the resolution soon as Louie, he's been tied up all day. Our attorney goes over the resolution, and we'll do the resolution.
Thank you. And I will say about the resolution, it is submitted to the Regional Forester, because the Regional Forester is the entity that decided to fund this grant, and I don't think that they understood, reading this grant, how wonderful it sounds for the economy and the social context. I don't think they really understood that the Linville Gorge Wilderness Area is not a part of all of that that they've discussed in the grant. So I hope that they will see that expressed.
Susan, we were assured that Morganton would be a location for a public hearing coming up, too, whether that happens or not, but they assured me that would happen.
That's very good.
I know y'all had one at Ginger Cake, and I'm waiting to hear when that date will be.
Yes, sir. We did have a meeting at Ginger Cake Acres in late June, and I have twice met with the Forest Service since then with a number of members of my community, and there are ongoing discussions and efforts to, you know, change each other's views to broaden them. So we'll continue to keep you informed, too.
There was one of the things that you asked us to do that needed to be done before January 15.
The resolution.
Right.
The comments.
It was comments, submission of comments.
The resolution, I do not personally feel is necessary. The comments will go to the Asheville office. They are making an environmental assessment of all the comments they receive. They will take into account, and many people are submitting comments about smoke impact on health, about how you could plant these endangered species where fire has already cleared land instead of clearing off more land by burning. So there are many comments and things. Those are what need to be submitted by the 15th. If you do submit comments, when the EA, the environmental assessment ruling comes out, you will have the right to appeal that ruling, if you have done so by January 15. If you submit comments on January 16, they may still be looked at or considered, but you will not have a right to appeal. So that's very important if you are interested in having that right, whether you are an elected body or whether you are a private citizen. And I did speak at the encouragement of Mayor Cohen today with the Burke County manager, and he was very kind to give me a few minutes and did advise me that they have a resolution on their upcoming agenda, which is the third Tuesday, yes, the 15th. And I did not have time to get those details, but he asked me to provide this presentation to him as well.
Okay, good. So you'll be there the 15th?
I am planning on it, yes, sir.
Okay. John Kelly will have that address from Ms. Lookzak up in Asheville.
Good, thank you.
And anyone else that Kelly will have that address for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it very much. Be safe going up the mountain.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to the public hearing. I want to, oh, I'm sorry, anyone else wanting to speak? Okay. I want to open up a public hearing for Economic Development Grant Agreement with SigWorke EIC LLC Burke County and Burke Development Incorporated. Scott, Sally, you might want to give them a little introduction.
You want me to give an introduction? Scott can handle it.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. A couple of weeks ago, we had another great announcement in Morganton, Burke County. The SigWorke, which was formerly Environmental Inc., a homegrown company here in Burke County, Morganton, was expanding and continuing to add jobs in our community, which is a great thing. Some of the things as part of it is, it wasn't only an announcement, it was a great thing for the community, where Morganton's one of the most beautiful communities we know in the state. However, where their plant was located, it's one of the areas it wasn't. The old facility that had, was really in front of their business was the former Capri Tile Company, which had been targeted for years for redevelopment. As the company continued to evaluate options, building or other space, the private development side, with the help of Lee Anderson, come to the surface of, let's lease this facility and redevelop this plant, and it served as a win-win, not only for the growth of the community, but a growth of the company as well. As a part of that, the city was awarded a $240,000 reuse grant to help in the redevelopment of that building, as well as the state issued a $36,000 one-in-C grant. And tonight, we bring forward the local commitment. Burke County will have the same agreement at their meeting this month, but this agreement calls for three installments over three years, where the city would be paying a total of $2,888 or $960 per year, and then the county has their portion as well, which we'll introduce at their meeting on the 15th. I would like, and we've invited Jim Stoke and Kirk Franklin. Jim's the president of SigWorke U.S., and Kirk's their VP of Technology, so it's best for them to tell you a little about what's going on, and great to have them tonight. And Jim, if you would come up and say a few words.
You bet.
Jim, thank you, and Kirk for being here tonight.
Oh, you bet. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, thank you for having us here tonight. You know, 30 years ago, Ed Redman, well, 30-plus years ago, wasn't it, Kirk? Ed Redman came to Morganton and decided to build, start an ink company, and through the years, his commitment to Morganton grew, and as of now, you know, the SigWorke EIC employs nearly 120 people in the Morganton facility. And when SigWorke bought Environmental Links and Coatings from the Redman family, we share that commitment to the Morganton community, and as we looked at options to expand both domestically in the U.S. and outside the borders, we truly and firmly believe that the most profitable and effective place to grow our business is in Morganton. And thanks to Scott and the efforts of a number of folks in the community, we were able to achieve that win-win-win, when not just for SigWorke EIC, but a win for the property holders who now have an asset that's usable and not an eyesore, and not really a liability for them, and a win for the community. And I'm glad and happy to say that we're well on our way towards achieving the grant numbers of employees that we targeted since the July timeframe already. So we're a proud part of the community. Let Kirk just say a few words as a native citizen of Morganton as well. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's just, as a lifelong resident of the Morganton Burke County area, this is, I'll echo what's already been said, win-win-win. Obviously, for SigWorke EIC, this is a win. The grants enable us to expand and optimize our operations for the area. It's a win, because we add jobs and add revenue to our community, but more importantly, I think to me, is after 27 years of driving by that old dilapidated building, that old rusty water tank, it's just a real pleasure to go by and see the mountains and just to know that that building, the remaining portions of that building are being renovated and to be used again. I remember when it was Armsetta, and very vibrant, and it's been sad to watch it fall apart over the years, and we're just excited to see it rejuvenated and revitalized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Kirk, for the comments. Jim, worldwide, how many employees does SigWorke have?
Worldwide, we have, it's roughly 10,000 employees worldwide. We have presence in 30 countries worldwide, and our strategic intent is that Morganton and the operations in Morganton are the hub of the North American production activity for our label ink products. And so, you know, this time of year is a great time of year for Slim Fast. Our ink is on Slim Fast labels. But we're on a number of products throughout the, you know, throughout the grocery store. But anyway, we're proud corporate citizens of Morganton, North Carolina.
Jim, if we can help you in any way, all you got to do is call. I mean, necessarily. Sally's here every day, and our city council is very attentive to economic development and to your company, and we're looking forward to many good things.
Well, we appreciate that, and we've already gotten a tremendous amount of help and support, and, you know, we've been able to tap into the job retraining program from here in town and have some of our most successful employees as a result of that program. And, you know, we look, you know, and we've also provided some very honest feedback, as well as what to Scott and to others with the things that help us grow in Morganton.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Scott, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you, good job. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the public hearing. Anyone else in the audience like to speak for or against? Close the public hearing. Council, let me have your wishes.
Motion to approve an Economic Development Assistance and Grant Agreement between the City of Morganton, Burke County, and SigWorke EIC LLC.
Aye.
Have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. The next item, other business, consideration to award a design contract for rehabilitation of the Morganton Community House and a budget amendment.
Last month, you'll recall that you approved a budget amendment of $10,000 as the seed money for this project. Several months back, the city staff was approached by members of the Pilot Club, and they have talked with us about the opportunity to take a look at the Community House and to work on a public-private project that would ultimately lead to the renovation of the Morganton Community House, and that is what this is dealing with. We have worked with seeking proposals from architectural firms that would come on board with the conceptual phase, to start interviews, a look at the facility, to give us, and the Pilot Club that is going to be our partner in this project, concepts to look at for what the Community House can be, to what it needs in the form of renovation to make it a viable facility. Have selected Glazer Architecture out of Asheville to be the firm to do that. Have received a proposal for $28,000. This is two actions tonight you would be considering. First of all, approving that contract for the $28,000. First of all, approving that contract for the $28,000, and then another budget amendment to recognize $18,000 in private funding to match the $10,000 that you agreed to put up. $15,000 of that is coming from the Pilot Club, and the other three is still being worked on.
Okay.
Move to approve a contract for architectural services to Glazer Architect P A in amount of $28,000.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion further? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay.
Move to approve a budget amendment to receive $18,000 in private contributions for the community house redevelopment project.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, next item is consideration of agreement with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for the provision of administrative assistance. The North Carolina Rural Center Building Reuse Grant, Skelly Incorporated. Sally.
This is another Rural Center reuse grant that we have been successful in accomplishing through our partnership with Burke County and B D I and local industry. Back earlier this year, we received a grant to help Mr. Skelly do some renovation work over at the old Burglin Building on Meeting Street, and that work has been accomplished. Those grants come with a requirement for an administration match, a local match to that. The city and the county have been sharing the match with that, but we have been contracting with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments to provide that service because they are equipped to do that. This is the contract for this project with the COG to provide $3,600 in local match and administration for the grant. That $3,600 will be shared equally between the city and the county.
Move we approve the contract with Western Piedmont Council of Governments for administration of this project. Kelly Rural Center Grant for $3,600.
Second. Have the motion, we have a second. Discussion?
I think it might be good just for the audience to be reminded what Skelly does. They're a foam, a foam cutter, remote.
The furniture industry and other. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Consideration of a contract with West Consultants for the Mountain View Tank. Sally.
The old standpipe is, as we call it, the old water tank that's located on Mountain View Street, which, when you drive by and look at it, does look pretty poor. This has been a topic of discussion for years, and I do mean years. Attempted several years ago to proceed with tearing that tank down. It has not been used for quite some time now in the provision of water services to the citizens of Morganton. However, it has been used for quite some time as a communications tower with communications equipment being located on the standpipe. It is one of the highest points in town, and it is very important to our communications. It is very important to public safety's ability to tone out firemen and to respond to that. It is very important to our backup communications for public works, for your public utilities, the water and sewer department. And so it's a valuable asset for us in how we do daily business. What we would like to do, because we really would like to be able to proceed with getting rid of the tank, but we need to assess what communications we need and where they need to be to best serve the citizens of Morganton, is to contract with Benji Thomas at West Consultants. He has been doing some preliminary work with us. We are planning to have a presentation on this item that Benji, if we move forward with this contract, is going to help us with in presenting the pros and cons and all sides of the opportunity to possibly get rid of the tank. This is for his services. It is a not-to-exceed contract, $33,325, and that is budgeted in this year's budget. You included that, and ultimately, some dollars if we proceed with demolishing that and creating some other form of communications there.
Motion to consider and approve the contract with West Consultants P L L C to perform engineering services for a total of not more than $33,325. Second. Have the motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Mr. Leonard, you wake up in the morning, you can see that tank.
I can see it.
Yep, I know it's across the street. We will be addressing that, and what West has to say, they're going to make a non-public meeting, but at the workshop, give us a heads up on the city council on how to proceed. And it is not a public hearing, of course, and.
It's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing.
And give us an idea of what it's going to be for us to be able to proceed with the antennas, et cetera, et cetera, and take the tank down.
And information from our communications folks who, who give us advice on that as well.
And knowing you, you know, you're innovative, possibly you could take chunks of that tank and sell it in the public as a member of B D, because it's been there as long as you and I have been around, and even further, I think goes back into the 20s. So, yeah, so keep that in mind. That's the way, you know, the men's club, the rotary club, or any, could make a little money. I'm just joking, of course.
If he's, if he's going to do that, Mr. Mayor, would you be interested in just taking the whole thing?
Exactly.
We voted already, right? Yeah, yeah, okay. Anyway, I knew you were here, and I knew you'd wake up in the morning looking at the thing. Consideration of reimbursement resolution, comma, H V A C, and demer installation. Sally.
Another item included in the capital program for this current year's budget is the opportunity to upgrade and replace the H V A C system at Comma, which I believe is 26 years old, and to upgrade the demer system there. In order for us to do that, we have planned to borrow money through installment financing to fund that this year, as we are starting to work on that and starting to make considerations, but we don't have the financing in place yet. It's customary that we would ask you to approve a reimbursement resolution, which will allow us, once we borrow those dollars, to replace the dollars we may spend ahead of time.
Okay, I'm going to make two motions so we won't get confused. Mr. Attorney, if I get confused, you let me know.
No, this is.
This is the one right here.
Just this one.
Okay. Motion to authorize the city Morganton reimburse itself from the proceeds of a tax-exempt financing for certain expenditures made in connection with the Comma, H V A C, and demer installation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Now, this one is a motion.
No, don't do that. I would, I would do the two people. Right, that'll be under other items. Do the appointment first if you will.
Okay, all right, stay in, I'm sorry.
Stay in order, we'll have to beat you.
Go ahead, Sally.
The Firemen's Relief Fund Board has two appointments that are coming up for expiration of their terms, January the 15th, 2013. One of those is a council appointee, and that is currently being filled by Danny Lingerfelt. The second one is a public safety appointee, currently being filled by Captain Mark Bradshaw. Both of those members have agreed to continue serving if you are interested in reappointing them.
Okay.
I move we appoint Danny Lingerfelt and Mark Bradshaw to Firemen's Relief Fund Board, whatever they're paid.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Next item, Sally.
Now, we have two items to consider under other items that were laid before you with your consideration tonight. The next one refers and, and deals with, again, the bidding process for the replacement and upgrade of the Comma H V A C project. The city staff has been working on that and has taken bids in a design-build process. We'll tell you that as we have been reviewing those, there are some clarifications that we feel like would make that bidding process clearer, and would ask, since we took the bids in a formal matter, manner, that you reject those bids and allow us the opportunity to take those bids again and bring them back to you at a later date.
And that would be with some changes in the specifications.
Exactly.
I move to reject the bids for the Morganton Community, Morganton's Comma H V A C Upgrade Project and direct staff to re-advertize for bids.
Second. Have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Last item is consideration, no, I'm sorry.
No, we haven't done that.
Consideration to accept an award from Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program and Approval of Budget Amendment.
Public Safety has applied for federal funds, and those are Assistance to Firefighters Grant Funds, A F G Funds, as we call them, in order to be able to help out with physical examinations for public safety officers and fire engineers that would meet the N F P A Guidelines, which is the National Fire Protection Association, to use these grant monies to purchase fitness equipment that would be used in the program, that would also meet National Fire Protection Association requirements and standards. They have been successful. We have been notified that we have been awarded $64,681 in this grant that requires a local match of $3,404. Because we had no idea if we would be successful or not with this, we elected not to budget it until we knew. So you have before you tonight two items, to accept the award if we would like to do that, and then to approve the budget amendment receiving $64,681 in federal funds and allowing us to spend $3,404 to match it.
Two motions, guys.
Okay, make the motion to accept award from Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program, A F G.
Second.
Have the motion, we have a second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
And then a motion to approve the budget amendment in amount of $68,085, $64,681 in federal funds, and $3,404 in local funds.
Second.
All right, have a motion, second discussion of that. All in favor, say aye. All right, there's a motion to go in, make a motion to go in a closed session pursuant to General Statute Section 143 Dice 318, 11A4, to discuss matters relating to location of a business within the city.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We will not have any decisions on that when we come out, okay?
We do need to invite.
Lee Anderson.
Thank Lee Anderson.
Yeah, Lee Anderson, you're invited. Not a, not a, not a signed invitation, just a verbal, okay? And Ron George.